Welcome to the City of War- Warrenville Public Safety and Finance Committee of the whole regular meeting. Public comment will be, only will be available in person during the meeting. Meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Roll call, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry? Absent. Alderman Davlos? Absent. Alderman Ruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All that can please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any public comments tonight? I didn't get any slips. No public comment. We'll move into the official and staff comments. Anyone on the council? Mayor?
Just got a couple of things here. As a result of our proclamation for Constitution Week last week, we have a recognition here from the Daughters of the American Revolution Certificate of Appreciation. So anybody who would like to see that, you can pass that around. And I sent a note around to council with some information about a meeting I went to last week, and Christina attended, Administrator White and I attended, about innovations from local communities. They submitted it to the DuPage mayors and managers for an evaluation. Then they did a, then they did a presentation, which was judged also as to how they presented. So it was kind of a little fun with it, but very interesting on watermarks for FOIA records in videos that police get requested for, the drone in Oak Brook, ways of handling, being able to see online what zoning is and things like that. So it was very, very educational, informative, and perhaps we'll have something next year on that, who knows, on the pop-ups. But if anybody would like to see it, I'll pass this around too, so you can see that. And last, I think I mentioned months ago, and Administrator White mentioned also that we're looking at the agendas and how our meetings are currently structured, and the timing of it, and things like that. So put it in the back of your head, next meeting, I'm going to look to find two aldermen to serve on a little bit of a work group with the staff to see if we want to make any changes for next year, because that's coming up soon, to set the schedule for 2026. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No other, no other comments. We'll go on to the business of the meeting. Item number one, informational presentation of police summer safety initiatives. Chief Mania.
Hi, good evening. What I wanted to do tonight was provide a little summary of some of our, the work that the police department focused on this summer to make Warrenville a little bit safer for the increase in pedestrians and bicyclists and automobiles that we saw over the summer. So what I did was I spoke to a lot of our supervisors about talking to their teams and coming up with some proactive shift initiatives to address some of the problems that we might have in Warrenville. So what they did was they went back to their teams, discussed some of the problems that they've seen around the community that we can address, and I allowed them to go ahead and set up some team initiatives to get out there and be proactive throughout the community in enforcing and educating and deterring a lot of what we would see that would be considered a safety hazard for our residents. So as you can see, we had several initiatives where we even teamed up with other departments and other agencies, where we teamed up with Naperville Police Department and the Illinois Department of Transportation in many initiatives that we have here. Our final tally for our summer initiatives, we had 212 written warnings, which we consider educational, and 276 traffic citations, nine parking citations, and 12 arrests from these, just these initiatives alone, not from just normal going out and doing police work. We also use this information to help identify some problems that, that we would see around the Warrenville area that needs further attention, and it's going to help us to identify how we want to set up our procedural matters in addressing these issues when we do our traffic study throughout the community. So I felt that the, some of these numbers were pretty significant as far as some of the issues, and I just wanted to give an update to the council and let them know that we are out there and we're addressing some of the complaints and some of the things that we hear from the residents to address some of the issues out there.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Go ahead.
Just a quick question on the chart on the table there with the three that are highlighted in yellow?
Yes, sir.
What does that represent?
So those are, those are pedestrian slash bicycle accidents within the city of Warrenville that we've had. We've provided numbers in the past as far as what those, these are what we've identified this year that we've had so far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the report, chief. I just have a question. Does the city have a noise ordinance?
We, we have a, we do have a noise ordinance, and it's, anytime that it's loud and disturbing around the community, that's interfering with somebody's enjoyment of the peace.
Is, is that a difficult thing to enforce, and how is it measured?
Well, it, well, it depends if, what time of day it is, how it's interfering. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into play, but it's typically up to the officer's discretion in how that disturbance is affecting others in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor?
So were there any aha moments or big surprises on any of these, or, or items that you say, boy, we gotta do that again, or do it all year round, or anything really pop up?
So these are going to be continuing. For me, a lot of these are aha moments, because what I do is I rely on a lot of the patrol sergeants and the patrol officers who, those are the ones with the feet on the ground and can easily identify the problems, which is why I went to them, to allow them to create these initiatives. So for me, a lot of these are aha moments, because I'm in administrator position. I don't see these things firsthand. So once I see these numbers getting reported back to me, I could start shifting our focus to where it needs to be. So taking their information, taking some of the complaints that we've gotten from residents, and now we can start addressing specifically what are the issues that are, you know, plaguing Warrenville as far as our safety issues.
Anyone else? Thank you. That was an excellent report.
Thank you.
It was actually a joy to read. That was no action, information only. Item number two, the city holiday schedule for calendar year 2026. Assistant Clerk Gravetti?
Good evening. Yes, the draft calendar, it was included in the agenda packet. If you have any questions about the dates, feel free to discuss. There's, there is one, one holiday that happens on a weekend that, because it's on, it falls on a Saturday, then we observe it on Friday. I think that was, that's the Fourth of July. It's the only holiday that occurs as an observance.
Is there any questions from the council? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I don't think there are any significant changes, no increase to the number of holidays. So with that, I make a motion to recommend the city council approve the calendar year 2026 city holiday schedule as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of fiscal year 2027 budget adoption timeline. Director Dollstrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you is the budget preparation and adoption timeline for, for the fiscal 2027 budget process. It will begin for staff on October 31st, when it will become available. We will be doing all the budget entry within our new sys- system, which is going to be a great relief, and I can put my big giant spreadsheet to bed. This calendar of events also includes the city council budget workshop, which is slated for the fourteenth of March on a Sa- 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 Saturday, which would go from 9:00 AM until approximately 12:00 PM. The final budget consideration would take place at the April 20th, 2026 city council meeting, where we will also adopt the final work plan and the authorized strength ordinance. And if there are any questions, I can take those.
Thank you. We always look forward to the process, Kevin. Item number four, informational discussion of the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we need a motion. Alderman Ruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve the fiscal 2027 budget preparation and adoption timeline as presented, including a city council budget workshop on Saturday, March 14th, 2026.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All that, those that are opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to informational discussion of the 2027 city council budget consideration forums. Director Dollstrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the items that's included in our budget process annually is an opportunity for city council members to put forward for consideration an item that they would like to have continued through the budget process. I will have a form, actually two forms for each of you tonight. If you need additional forms or would like to electronically, you can reach out to me and I'll make sure you receive that. Any completed forms that you are going to submit, and you're not required to, but if you'd like to, they are due back to me by October 20th. That way they can be vetted by staff, worked through, and then be prepared to be presented at the November 2025 Public Safety and Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, that's information only. Thank you. Item number five, informational presentation of fiscal year 2026 financial update. Director Dollstrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair- Chairman. Included in your packet tonight is the first financial update for fiscal 2026. I'll start out by saying that all funds right now through July are operating in the black. I will also share that it is a little hard to project through July, because there are a number of things, particularly on the revenue side, that although we received them in July, still reflect back to last fiscal year, and we're not quite complete with the audit and don't have all those entries back and, and recorded. So there's a little bit of an, an issue with doing July. So what I attempted to do was look at all the major revenue sources in each of the funds and have them up to as current as I could, which would be majority of them are through the things received in September, and there is a little bit of a lag to that because of how the state remits it to us. I'll start out by sharing that the state shared sales tax, as you can see on this graph, rolling chart, great graph, is running about $30,000 ahead of where we were a year ago, and I'll explain why that's happening momentarily. We're having a similar situation in the home rule sales tax. Again, that's operating at about $32,000, that, that dollars ahead of a year ago. And here's where I can start to explain this. The state use tax, there were revisions made at the state level to the leveling the playing field act, and also to, also there'll be the effect of some legislation passed by the state as part of their fiscal 2026 budget, and it changed the way other states remit sales tax to the, to the state of Illinois, and in turn, how that gets remitted to us. If you see on the chart there in front of you, a year ago, it was about $42,900 per month that we were receiving in use tax. That has dropped down to $27,470. IML is where I rely upon for those projections, and they do project that has gone, gone, gone down. It's considerably down from where we started out the year, and those, that decrease is actually being picked up in those other two taxes, because it changes the way those taxes get remitted, instead of as use tax, they get remitted to us as sales taxes. So we're offset, setting the loss in use tax by, by the gains in the, you know, sales tax and the home rule sales tax. Food and beverage tax is largely unchanged, year to year, it's averaging about $63,000 per month, and it's been that way for a while, and there are about 52 entities that are collecting and remitting that tax to us monthly. State shared income tax, we are about $30,000 ahead of where we were in, in prior years. That is largely our new census population of 15,195 residents compared to the 13,553 we had prior to that. And then there's also been a little bit, a bit of an increase in that overall in the remnants from the state. So that's helping also offset part of that loss, not directly, but a little bit of the loss we're seeing on that use tax as well.
Kevin, can I ask you a question on this one?
Sure.
The bottom right there, it says the green is 22. Should that be 25? Never mind, it's the home rule sales tax.
On the expense side for a moment, 10 out of the 12 cost centers within the general fund are under budget through, through July. I know, there's no slide for this one. There are two that are over. One of them is the police department, which is due to the timing of the remittance of the property tax that we receive, comes to us and then goes directly into the police pension fund. That first remittance is a fairly large chunk, so it kind of makes it look like we spent a whole lot out of there, and that's why that department is over. And then also in the parks and recreation part of the general fund, the costs associated with the 30 park project are in there, while not all of the revenues for that, the grants and that kind of thing are not all reflected in there yet, but will be, that's part of an accounting entry from last fiscal year into this fiscal year as well. CMRP, the amusement tax is about $4,400 ahead of a year ago, on a year-to-date basis. The amusement tax will take a small hit for the time that Phoenix Cinemas was closed while they remodeled. That was only about a three-week period, has not had a big impact on this yet. Right now, we're averaging about $23,300 a month. A year ago was about $22,000. So there is a little bit, bit of improvement there, but that should flatten out as a result of that, of the work at Phoenix. Electric utility tax remains and has been very flat since we started out doing this. It's averaging about $7,900 per month. That's been that way all along as that chart sees, our red and green lines there are just almost flat, and it's been that way year to year, and it remains to be that way now. Natural gas tax has been, seen a little bit of improvement, about $1,200 per month. There's not been any huge increase. We also haven't had many cold months, any, yet to affect our gas use, so we should see a little bit, bit of an increase once it gets cold, assuming it ever actually does. Local motor fuel tax is running about three grand per month below where it was a year ago. A year, year ago, we were at about $46,600 per month. We are currently at about $43,300. I assume right now that that's due to some decline in the actual gas usage at the, at the moment, and hopefully that does not continue to go. It's still, though, is going to operate ahead of budget as of right now. Telecom tax has actually been fairly flat during the last year. It's been, it's been a declining source of revenue for a number of years. It's not declining as much right now. Hopefully we found a flattening out point for that, and it doesn't continue, although at this point, I'm not sure that'll hold true, because it has been declining for many Hotel tax, doing very well. It's about $3,000 per month above where it was a year ago. The hotels have actually now surpassed the revenues that occurred before COVID, so it's actually gone, gone well beyond where it had been. It had been sort of a slow recovery, and now is recovered quite well, and continues to do so. Additionally, in your packet there, there is, the last 10 pages are the pages that we were able to produce out of the new ERP. It has fund-by-fund figures that show the details of each of the revenues within those funds, and then it has the, a summary by either department or cost center for each of the departments. The, the, there is a separate page for each fund that's showing each of those things, and it has a bottom line on each of those. We, due to our new system, they, they are a lot easier to produce, there are a lot less manual intervention on our part to produce that actual report, so we would like to step up how many times per year we're able to do that. We also are in the process of working out a cash investment report, which we will also provide with this. We don't quite have the form of that finalized yet. It didn't quite come out the way we thought, thought, thought it would, so we're still working on that, so the, the next time we present a report, we'll include that as well. If there is anything that is not in this report that someone would like to see, please let me know, and we'll see if there, if there's a way to add that into any future updates we do. And we're also working on determining ways to provide more graphs and charts that come directly out of the software. The ones in here tonight are prepared by me based on the history I maintain of all our major revenues, but I'd like our system to be able to produce that, and that'll get easier as we go and get more data into our system, because it does not have all the historical data available that I do. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have at this point.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alderman Goodman, Mr. Goodman?
The state sale, the shared sales tax and the shared use tax, one's diving up and the other's diving down. Do you understand why that didn't happen in a particular month?
No, I don't know why it didn't happen in a particular month, but the beginning of Jan- January is when they made the changes in leveling the playing field act, and since then it's been working way, way, way down, and IML has been providing ongoing estimates of the decline in that that we should expect to see, and that's been the case so far.
Does the, does the new act mean that it's just showing up in a different fund, or is there an actual change in the, in the amount?
Well, I think there's, there's a little bit of both. It's not showing up by them paying the use tax anymore, it's showing up by them paying the regular occupation taxes, occupation taxes, which is why it's showing up in the other two, and the one is declining.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Lockett?
Oh, a couple of things. Thank you, Kevin. This is such a great report, good to look at. Kind of speaking to that use tax. So the way that I see this is that the use tax is down around $200,000, but the sales tax and the home rule is up $360,000. So we're about a net $160,000 positive. So it's, seems as if, you know, it's, it's better, right? And one of the things that I did read about the act was that they are now putting that tax towards where our package or whatever it may be is actually being delivered, right? So we want to encourage everyone to keep using Amazon, that'll help us all. So that's kind of how I saw it, so it's still, it's a positive thing for us moving forward right now. Let's hope that continues. Couple of quick questions, just about, so the parks and rec, it's been billed out, but we just don't have the funds yet from the grants, correct?
Well, there is grant funding in there. We do not have all the grant funding. If you recall, a year ago, we've got the first half of both phases of that grant, so each grant was $600,000. We received $300,000 of each. However, due to an accounting rule, we couldn't account for all that in last year, because all the expenditures have not occurred, so it goes in, and this, and this will be part of the audit report as well. It comes out as what's called deferred revenue. So we have to defer from last year into this year, and once we make that reversal from the entry from fiscal 2025 into here, we'll recognize that, and then ultimately, the public works director will be able to submit for the other two phases of the grant money, which will then flow into here, and we obviously don't reflect those until that money's actually here.
Right, but that should kind of take out the balance, the existing balance, so it's just a holder, placeholder for now.
Absolutely.
Until we get the money, okay. And then...
Oh, let me point out one other piece of that, as you recall. We're also going to be using some share of the park, city share park developer donations to pay for that as well, and we'll, we'll recognize that as we go through the year as well.
Okay, great. And then for the cannabis, so for that dispensary on the amusement tax, I was just trying to understand, so the $17,000 that we're showing there, that's, I guess the question is, is the cann- I know we didn't really project anything, because we didn't know, right? And I know that it's really slow in reporting numbers, getting the stuff from the state. So I guess in your opinion, with the cannabis, I mean, is it doing, without us having projections, or us not projecting anything, is it doing okay? Because it looks like it's only like $4,000 a month, because the gambling is like $13,000, and that's, you know what I mean?
So it's doing okay. Part of the issue there here is because it is a single entity in town, we cannot report out what they're specifically doing themselves. There's confidentiality rules at the state level. So that money comes in through the home rule sales tax and then the sales tax, which then, when it's available to us, is after a quarter ends, we have to go back and take that money out of the general fund portion of that and put it where it belongs. So it's a little hard to see that right now, because I can't see the parts that aren't reported yet.
Okay.
So it's, it's doing okay, though.
Okay.
We're not going to, we're not getting rich, we're not, we didn't win a big lottery or anything, but it's doing fine.
Okay, good. And then finally, so, and the water and sewer currently shows an abundance of money, but that is only because we haven't made any payments to Naperville, because we're still waiting to finalize, I guess, our portion, our cost, our obligation to them, correct? But that should get wiped out as well, right?
Correct. So when we look at the fiscal 2025 audit, we'll see that the fund balance in there has also increased, but it's directly because of our agreement with Naperville has not been finalized, and we have not made a payment to them. As of right now, it looks like that first payment will occur in January of next year. I wouldn't hold me to that, but that's the way it looks right now. So once we start paying them, it'll decrease that fund balance significantly as we go it'll decrease that fund balance significantly as we go along.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin. I appreciate the work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, Alderman Lockett brought up an interesting point about grants. And I just wonder whether there's an itemized list of the grants that the city has applied for, the ones that are in the offing and like what the status is and the due date and things like that. It's just like, I think it would be helpful for me to like see a total picture of, of grants and where we're at with them.
We could certainly assemble that, that list and make sure that gets presented, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. That was excellent. I always enjoy, you, you make it very understandable.
Good. That's my goal.
So thank, thank you very much. Item number six, review and file administration, finance, and police department fiscal year 2026 work plans and decision packages. Does anyone have any questions? That's an information only. We'll go down those. Item G, commendations. Chief Benia?
Yes, sir. I just had three commendations that I wanted to share with council. We had one from a resident who wanted to thank Officer Max Pointe for some information, important information that he provided to her, that assisted her. That was during the Fourth of July ceremony. She sent a quick note. We have another one from the chief of police of Elmhurst, which I'll go ahead and share with everyone. On the morning of Friday, July 25th, 2025, Elmhurst Police responded to serve an arrest and search warrant in the 300 block of South Sunnyside with the assistance of merit Metro SWAT officers. Two firearms plus ammunition were recovered as part of the investigation regarding an armed man who refused to surrender to authority. The offender was safely taken into custody and charged with one count domestic battery, two counts of unlawful possession of a firearm without a FOID card, and two counts of unlawful possession of ammunition without a FOID card. He was transported to DuPage County Jail and ordered detained. I wanted to, I wanted to thank you personally for the assistance provided by Warrenville Police merit members Jacob Seaman and Josh Wittenberg for their assistance in this incident. Please convey our sincere appreciation to these courageous and dedicated officers for answering the call out, which ultimately led to the successful apprehension of this armed dangerous offender. We thank you for your ongoing professional assistance and support. Rest assured that we are ready to reciprocate whenever needed. Respectfully, Michael McLean, Chief of Police, Elmhurst. And lastly, we have a, another letter from a resident to the police department. This is regarding Corporal Newtoff. And I'll go ahead and just summarize. Our resident came into the police department to report her cell phone missing in Cerny Park. They went back, they couldn't find it anywhere. So they came to the police department to report it missing. Corporal Newtoff took the report. And when the residents went back to look for it again, Corporal Newtoff took the initiative to go out there ahead of them, located the phone for him and then returned it to him. So they just wanted to express their sincere gratitude for the return of the cell phone.
Thank you. The, the commendations kind of reflect the humanity, efficiency and professionalism of the department. It's kind of broad spectrum this time, even with just three commendations. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the agenda items. Is there anything anybody else wants to bring up before we close her down? No comments? We just need a motion. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have, thank you very much. And thank you, Jeff.